Thank you. All right, welcome to the 5:30 PM, September 26, 2024, final budget hearing for the city's proposed budget. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. The following is the procedure for public comment at the special city council meeting. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table. Next, individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very mer- yeah, very much, very much. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. This is the final budget hearing, and I have a presentation to provide counsel, and then we'll get to get to it. Next slide. This is the process. We began with the budget being presented to you on 23 July. The proposed millage was 6.5817 with the debt millage of .1936. Budget workshop was held on 8 August with the with me setting the reduction of the operating millage rate back to 6.581 mills. First public hearing was held on the 12th, and this is where we're at today. These are the resolutions, City Attorney, or ordinance to be read by the City Attorney.
Ordinance number 28, 2024. An ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Tidesville, and voted that service levy for fiscal year 2025 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 29, 2024. An ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, adopting the general and related budget to the city of Tidesville for the fiscal year 2025 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 30, 2024. An ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending section 21, 241, and 21, 243 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and increasing the schedule of rates and charges for water and sewer service, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 31, 2024. An ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending section 16, 116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste, recycling, and additional cart fees. And by amending section 16, 117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees. And by amending section 16, 118 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the extra charges for special services, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 32, 2024. An ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvements Program budgets of the city of Tidesville for the fiscal year 2025 and providing for an effective date.
Florida statute at both states that at both the public and the final hearing, city council must adopt its operating millage rate before it adopts the the capital budgets. Public may speak and ask questions before city council adopts any of the proposed budget-related ordinances. This is the proposed FY25 revenues, $146,691,741, and the sources for the those revenues. And the expenditures, the same amount and where they are being expended. I'm required to read this publicly. The city of Tidesville, Florida, is the taxing authority. 6.3536 is the rolled-back millage rate. The operating millage rate to be levied is 6.5817 mills. The percent of increase over rolled-back millage rate is 3.59%, which is characterized as a tax increase. The voted debt millage rate levied is .1936 mills. The FY25 budget is built at an operating millage rate of 6.5817, which complies with the 10% on prior year revenues in accordance with chapter 34, 430, laws of Florida. During the public hearing, city council must discuss the percentage increase over millage and the rolled-back rate, if any, to fund the general fund budget and the purpose for which the ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. Here, public comments and and the increase of ad valorem and the millage rate. The FY25 budget is built at a 6.581 mills, which is 3.59 above the rolled-back rate of 6.3536 mills, generating 1.6 million in additional revenue over the FY24 adopted budget for ad valorem. The proposed budget uses these additional dollars to fund the 3.5% COLA to attract and retain the best-in-class workforce. It also funds the public safety, technology, vehicles, and equipment, and funds the increased costs of consumables due to inflationary pressures. The the general fund revenue or the general fund budget is 63,200, 223,738, and this is the sources of those revenues. The expenditures, and as you see, 45% of the expenditures is public safety of the general fund. The city enjoys the lowest per capita ad valorem per resident in Brevard County. The low, the one to the left of us is, in fact, Brevard County. This is the general fund millage comparisons of our peer cities in the county. This is our property tax house, a house valued at $240,800. That is homesteaded. That tax bill would be $3,503.30. As you see, 38.88% or $1,300 goes to Brevard Schools, 36.89% or $1,200 to the city of Tidesville, and 21.94% to Brevard County at $768. This is the utility rate changes. This is the summary of the utility rate changes. The stormwater management utility has been approved for a $21.30 annual increase. Solid waste proposed a 1644, and for a commercial dumpster of 14852, or 10%. This is a comparison to stormwater, and some of the other cities that we were comparing against have different revenue funds, such some actually use general fund for it. So you can see where we're proposed, where we're current, and where we're proposed. Solid waste rate comparison residential, we're on the low end again. Solid waste commercial on the low end. In summary, a typical residential monthly bill for 5,000 gallons for a residential customer, that increase will be $4.58 a month. On a typical commercial with a 3/4 inch line or meter at 5,000 gallons, the increase will be $5.90 a month. The typical commercial monthly bill for a 1-inch at 15,000 gallons will will see a $16.27 increase. The rate comparisons with our peer cities, these were, these rates that we're showing do not include any of the increases or proposed increases from any of the other cities. So I know that they will definitely go up, but you'll see that we are very average and in the middle of our peer cities. Okay, the action items. For FY25 follow-up items, adopt a millage rate of 6.5817, which generates an ad valorem revenue of 1.6 million over the FY24 budget. There's two options that city council can do. Make additions to the budget, which would require an offset or reduction to or greater than the addition, or make no changes to the city budget. We have read the related budget ordinances. Mayor, I think you have opened the final public hearing, and you may amend the tentative budget as deemed necessary by city council. And these are council's action.
Counsel, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are we good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel, anything to follow up with that? Members, talk.
Yep, I just had a question, probably for Kevin to see when, looking at the solid waste that we were on the low end, have you heard anything? Because I know we have our own solid waste and some of the other cities contract out. Have you heard about their rates going up or what that looks like?
Yeah, most everybody that contracts waste management has an automated increase matching CPI for garbage service. So so they don't always have a annual disclosure because of that, but that is in their current contracts. As far as I know, them and Waste Pro are both doing CPI adjustments.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring attention to that, why I think it's good that we still are doing ours within the city.
Yeah, and I know you've mentioned that several times, and I'm glad to see that as well. I think that, and I'm sure Waste Management does a great job, but I don't want to contract that out if we can help.
Well, yeah, and even just thinking about the hurricane that was hitting, like, they were able to say, hey, this is heading, let's go out earlier and have that control. So just want to say thank you for that.
Member Nelson?
Oh, just a question, and I think probably for Kevin. I understand the stormwater rate went up tremendously for Orange County. Do you recall what it was?
Yeah, I think theirs are projected 50% or 65% increases on their stormwater for Orange County.
And do you know what kind of projects they're looking at?
No, they they have a, they're similar to us. They do a lot of project work. They don't have a soil for the water quality side, so I imagine they're doing a lot of flood-prone area work. They also hadn't adjusted their rate, I think, in two decades, so they're playing a catch-up at this point. But I don't know what projects they're planning.
That sounds like we're playing catch-up too, in some ways.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from counsel? All right, and we will call the cards. We're going to do the first two first.
Yes, sir, since the millage in the budget is
Have to go first.
in the same conversation, and we'll open the public hearing so the public realizes if you want to speak as to the millage ordinance and the budget ordinance, we'll provide you three minutes for ordinance, and you could do that. So I would suggest providing speakers six minutes for each ordinance to talk about the millage and the budget, and we'll handle those together.
If they put them together, yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, and City Clerk, hopefully you have that clarified up there. So go ahead and call a card and give us a minutes.
Yes, sir. We have four cards altogether that have signed up for both ordinances, 28 and 29. I'll set the timer for six minutes. The first is Dwight Severs.
So these will be for six minutes, both ordinances. Hello, Mr. Severs.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, a longtime resident of Tidesville Taxpayers, former city attorney and retired city employee. I first want to thank Mr. Robati and Mrs. Butler and others who supplied me some information earlier in the week. I appreciate that, as well as posting the 2023 annual audit. I previously have expressed to you my concern about the city taxes going up above the rollback rate. And for myself, who retired from the city in 2011, they've gone up 42%. My city pension has gone down 40% in purchasing power, and I also express some concern about the rate increases. My primary concern is I believe there are certain expenditures which are inappropriate or out of line. I believe it was a wise decision for the city to accept approximately $8.6 million from the American Rescue Plan. I commend you for doing that. At my first appearance before you, my wife and I's appearance, we asked several questions. We did not receive any answers. I put them in writing to all of you, as well as certain city staff, as of September the 23rd. All of you should have those, as well as staff. I'd like to hear the answers to those questions.
I will let you do what you're going to do, and then what I would say is unless a council member wishes to address any of those at this time, then we can address those as as we finish. Member Nelson?
And I will say my apologies. I got a new cell phone. Everything's deleted. So, but I did did come in early to get your letter, so I was able to read it.
Okay. Well, I certainly think your staff could answer them, and because the courtesy provided me with some answers, but I have received nothing. And as I read Florida statutes, we're allowed to ask questions. And I assume the legislature doesn't need to tell you, you need to answer them. I would think that's obvious, but I received no answers.
And I would agree with you with some of the things you were were asking were certainly not things that I can tell you I'm overly familiar with. I'm not here. I don't work here. I'm not in HR.
Well, the first question I asked was retirement contributions, which is significant impact upon the general fund. It's going up $690,000. That's a very significant impact. And I asked the simple question, why? I asked the follow-up question, whenever there was a significant pay raises in 2022 to 2023, did you, the council and staff, allocate additional funds for the pension plan to cover that? As a matter of fact, you greatly reduced the pension contribution in that year to 1,792,000, and now it's 3,259,000. Why? Regarding the significant increase in pension contributions, was that due to poor management of the plan, which I doubt, poor rate of return, or for some other reason? As we all know, the council hires and fires and controls salaries of the city manager, city attorney, and assistant city attorney. And on page 60 and 61, you can see what the contribution for the retirement fund goes up and how much it goes up. In addition, according to the city manager's budget message, you propose a 3.5% COLA, and I asked staff, and they supplied me, that represents an increase in your budget of $737,599, and that covers 377 employees for approximately a $2,000 increase per employee on the average. Rather than a 3.5, I said at the last meeting, I think you need to look at that. And I gave you concrete examples, reason why, because many public works employees, we get $1,158, others will get $1,750. You make $50,000 per year, whereas in accordance with this budget, the city manager will be getting $7,721. Is that what you are authorizing? That's a question for you.
I would say, I would say, Dwight, that 3.5% COLA raise is something we were excited to give to our employees. And I can tell you that when I was the a teacher and a coach at Tidesville High School, making between 30 and $45,000, depending on how long I'd been there, when that 3.5% or 5% or 7%, whatever we were able to get, came down, my principal got more than I did, even though it was the same percentage. And if you were a teacher who was there at the top end, you got more than the teacher who was there at the bottom end. So that part mathematically, it's just going to be that way. So so I'm just, I'm just saying that that's not uncommon. A 3.5 is a 3.5, and if you're making 100,000, it's going to be more than the guy making 40,000.
Well, if you make more than 200,000.
I'm just telling you, that was my reply to that.
Well, I I fully understand that, but I think the the COLA is to help people.
Absolutely, and that's why we were excited to be able to do that. All people.
People at the upper end need help. And I think your public, your city manager, your personnel director can tell you there's different ways of distributing a pay increase. It doesn't have to necessarily be across the board. I've had experience seeing that as the city attorney for Tidesville, so it can be done.
And I'm not saying that's not something can be addressed in the future. At this point, I felt like 3.5, and that's what was presented to us. And certainly, I'm thinking fire, police, clerical, et cetera. And again, if as a coach and a teacher, fighting to make 40,000 a year, I'd take whatever I could get. But I realize if the superintendent got that, he certainly made a whole lot more than I did. He probably got more of an increase in a year than I got in a lifetime.
Sure.
So I understand that from the bottom up.
Certainly, the I, the Labor's Internationals typically have always done that here in Tidesville, and I noticed you approved the agreement of this last last meeting.
I disagree. Maybe some creativity could happen, and I can tell you, as I'm down there and the superintendent was up there, I was wondering that.
Well, the other concern I have, and perhaps I'm stepping on toes, but I do not think it's right to increase the disparity between the boss and the assistant, between your city attorney and your assistant city attorney, which you hire, you're increasing the disparity by $3,000. Is that what you want to do?
I'm saying we wanted a 3.5% COLA for everybody, and just like, and again, if you used a military, a general's going to get more in 3.5 than a corporal. And and that may not feel good to the corporal that went home and and having a tough time paying his bills. But I wanted to make sure, I think our council wanted to make sure, we were able to give whatever we could get, and that's how it was presented to us, and we approved that.
I don't disagree with giving a pay raise. I disagree when you have such a disparity, which I believe, in looking at other budgets around Brevard County, the upper level, there's quite a disparity. And I don't think, for example, the assistant clerk should make $60,000 less than the city clerk, and she's been here a long time. I don't think that's right, and you likewise are making it worse.
Member Nelson?
I sort of look at COLA not as a raise, but a cost of living to keep pace with inflation. So I don't look at it as a raise. And as a state employee, it was always across the board. We were happy to get it. There were some years we got nothing. But it was across the board. And two, I look at it and go, the person who is making 40,000 a year, and I won't tell you what I made when I started at the state attorney's office, but I was like, oh, my God, can I live on this? But you knew that after a year or two, things were going to get better. You had the opportunity to advance.
Sure.
And the same way with these guys that are starting at the bottom. You have that opportunity to advance. So.
The reason why I'm addressing you is because you set the budget.
Right.
You you set the budget. Who else can I address?
Oh, I agree.
And you are addressing us. And I don't, again, I'm the guy that was the first-year teacher at $15,500. So I, it's not like I'm the guy sitting up there in the penthouse.
You've got a lot of money.
I felt like it until I had to pay my bills. But so I I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate the sentiment. I do. I really felt that way when, well, truthfully, I got to be honest with you, I was very excited. If we got a 7% raise, and if I could just get to 20,000 and then to 30,000, I'm not kidding you. When I got to 30, I was feeling proud of myself. I didn't think too much about the fact that the superintendent or the principal got the same raise I did, except theirs was probably, if mine was $600, theirs was probably 6,000. I don't know. But that's, you know, that's the math of it. And I'm not saying that there can't be some consideration when this goes around, because that's kind of the first time I've heard this this expressed. But I certainly can't say I didn't feel it as it went down, and I was on the bottom end of the totem pole.
Sure, I understand. With regard to my questions, will they be answered? I have some others that I put in writing. I stated at the last meeting, you all have them or should have them, and staff has them.
I can answer the best I can.
I was talking also about the zone. Now I had questions about that. And I put them in writing.
Anybody want to make a comment on the zone? I feel like I've gave my part. Member Nelson?
I will. And I'm not sure who would be the best at answering this. I think there were some reasons that we were talking about constructing the sewer lines along Highway 50, and especially the lift station. I think for me, the lift station was a problem. So, Richard Scott, Terry.
Sure, sure. I I've read the report. There definitely was a problem with the lift station. It couldn't handle the capacity of the new addition. I understand that.
And I understand.
But likewise, I think your codes are quite clear, and you simply didn't follow the code. And as I have said, I mean, you expect everybody to follow the same code, and it seems to me, depending on who you are, for example, the Great Outdoors, that was a question I asked, getting 400,000 for irrigation. As it turned out, somebody made a campaign contribution to the gentleman's campaign, and there's another contribution given to that person's campaign. And it's interesting how that works. It should not be that way, and I respectfully suggest to you, why don't you do something about it? It's not right.
I think that in the future, we need to pay increased attention to those issues.
Certainly perceptions.
And especially perceptions. I think probably Scott can answer why we went this route as opposed to going through our code. Or Richard?
I can't answer about Great Outdoors. That is not city-related. Correct? I'm assuming you're talking about the county zone that did that. The Great Outdoors was county. That would the city would not be involved in that.
It's all city and county appointees. It's happened inside the city limits as well as outside the city limit.
With regard to the sewer line.
Certainly county tax dollars, not city tax dollars.
Correct. It was a county project. Correct, it was a county project. With regard to the sewer, those were TIF dollars that were put into the zone TIF, it wasn't out of our funds, it was money that went into the zone earmarked as zone dollars, and that was pursuant to a grant under the criteria of the zone. They came to the city because they needed permission to use our portion of that TIF money towards that sewer line that qualified for a zone grant under the terms of that grant.
Certainly, it's $885,000 of ad valorem taxes payable through the city of Titusville.
Hold on two seconds. So we paid some money toward that sewer line project.
The TIF, the zone dollars paid for that, the money that was put into the zone TIF per the formula for the zone that was created, that money has to be used for zone projects. And that came to you as a zone project that qualified as a zone project and qualified for those dollars.
And would it have been better to have gone through the process and basically forced the developer to pay for those lines? I mean, my question is, why do one as opposed to the other?
I can't answer why they went through the zone versus another route. I can just tell you, it came to us as a zone project, and our involvement was whether or not, given the project and the fact that it did provide capacity for the city and sewer capacity to the south in that area, and getting septic off the river as part of the project, whether we thought it was a wise or appropriate use of city dollars through the zone. That was the analysis for us.
All I know is it's ad valorem tax, money that's paid to the city of Titusville.
Right.
And you have an ordinance on the books that says what it says. It's very clear. And apparently, I don't believe you were aware that that ordinance even existed, and I think you should be aware of it.
I'm not sure that I was, I'm not sure the others were aware that that ordinance existed. At the time, I had forgotten about it, but I do know it exists. Does that make sense? So pardon, I screwed up.
Well, all I know is you got $885,000 per, a general city ordinance, that money could go for pay raises, go for a lot of other purposes, it seems to me, and I think at some point in time, you need to consider that. Rather than, I mean, we can talk about the zone a lot more, but I think as a policy matter, whenever the city is reviewing how its money is being spent, and the $2,200,000 is spent for the benefit of private individuals, I think you need to look at it and apply city ordinances, city purchasing policies, and regulations, not just let the zone do what it wants to do. Particularly since it's your money, and you have to approve the purchase if it's over $50,000.
I would agree, a further discussion was probably warranted. However, on the other hand, I sort of look at it and go hindsight, I admit hindsight, but I look at it, and I remember Dr. Jacoby saying, the worst thing that we can do to the river is have septic tanks along the river.
I don't see that as an option. I think that's dramatizing a situation that would never have existed.
I'm just saying, that's what he said. He was saying that that's just a tremendous problem.
Yeah, I think I've certainly tossed our way for that.
There's clearly easy avenues, and Mr. Broome is quite familiar with it, because at the end of Grissom Road, he negotiated a contract for the extension of the sewer line all the way down there with a payback agreement.
Okay.
There are clear historical options that exist, but the city has done. You have every right, if you're benefiting a property, to assess them for the value of the benefit. You have every right to do that.
And I think we did that for Victoria's.
Yes, yes, I remember that, yes. So I'd certainly hear what you're saying. I would say that, I feel like that, and your points are well taken, but I would also say that I'm not on the zone. I do sit in on meetings as a liaison and listen, and I'm pleased, when we got here, they had just kind of helped get the Miracle City Titus Landing Project complete, and that's really had a lot to do with where the zone was going. And now I have sat and listened to them working hard on the Sears Town with Jesse, and I hope that something happens that way. If that's the proper way, great. If it's not, well, then we, maybe some paradigm shifts.
My other questions. I mean, the first question is, why did the retirement controversy just go up $690,000?
I'm sorry? If council will allow me, I think you can answer a couple of those questions for you.
Yeah, let her finish.
Your question was, why did the retirement go up? So you singled out a couple of departments, but actually, it went up citywide. And the reason is, it did go up citywide. The reason is, the city budget's based on an actuarial determined amount. They provide us those dollars every year, and that's what we put into the budget. And it's then based on the percent of salaries within that department. So there were significant increases between FY '24 and FY '25, and we budgeted very close to the exact dollar that was given to us by the actuary. So that is determined outside of the city. They're provided with information, and that's what we put in the budget. And a couple of your other questions, do we change the retirement rates based on salaries? Yes. So the pension is, the actuary is given our salaries every year so that they can do their calculations, and then they provide us with the amount. So they get the salaries every year, and we put the amount in that they give us. So we don't calculate those they give that number to us.
So what you're really telling me, they were way off in their calculations.
I can tell you if they are or they aren't. They have their own algorithms that they use to calculate this. I can provide you with these two documents that I used to bring tonight. It shows that the police officers and firefighters' public safety pension between years went up 35.3%, and the other general employees' contribution between FY '24 and '25 went up 19.4%. So that's the amount that's given to us, and that's how we budget that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Severs, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Next card.
Yes, Suzanne Noel Copeland.
Thank you.
Hi, Suzanne Noel Copeland, I'm a resident of Titusville. I'd like to start by thanking the city staff who answered some questions that I had about the budget last week in an email. They were very prompt with their response, and it was very helpful for me. I've done a review of department-by-department resource counts and salaries, and I'm going to address the notion that everyone is going to get a 3.5 increase. Based on some information that's available on gov.salaries.com, between 2020 and 2023, the mayor's salary has increased by 76%. The current budget proposes to increase it again. Titusville's mayor in 2025 will have no experience as Titusville's mayor, so I don't see any reason to increase the salary of the role. The remainder of the city council has seen a 35% increase over the same four-year period of time. At least one, if not two, of the councilors will also be new in the role. I would propose something for the council, if not the mayor and the council, of a base salary within a, with a graduating scale, if they retain their seat election to election, rather than just automatically raising the rate for people that are coming in with no experience in the role.
Say that again, say that again real quick, because it sounds interesting.
So rather than just automatically increasing the city councillor's salary year over year, you start with a base, and you say that's the incoming rate. And if you win your next election, you get a X percent bump, because now you've got however many years in role.
Good.
Rather than everybody just coming up at a higher rate, and then you may have somebody that has been a city councillor for six years, and they're making the same as someone who's coming in with no experience. And that's a common way that.
Yeah, kind of like a beginning teacher making the same thing as a tenure teacher.
Right.
Yeah.
So that way you can adjust, and you're not just automatically raising everything up. The city manager has enjoyed a 34% salary increase over the same period of time, which puts the city manager's salary at 13% higher than the average city manager in the state of Florida. His department has proposed also to have an additional 3.5 salary increase in the proposed budget. Part of the materials that I got was the org charts and the salary information from the adopted 2024 budget and the proposed 2025 budget. And I want to point out some areas where it's not across-the-board 3.5%. Code enforcement had no change to their number of employees, but they have a salary decrease of 4%. Public Works admin has a decrease of FTEs by 70%, but they have, their budget decrease is only 14%. Similarly, the water and sewer admin has a decrease of 40%, but their salaries are only decreasing 20%. The water production branch had an increase of 22% in their resources, but they have a 72% increase in salaries. Reclamation branch has a 21% increase, but has a 57% salary increase. The overall public works department, which is departments that are 1,500s and 1,600s, have an overall 5% decrease, but an 8% increase. There's a support services department that appears to only have one person in it, but it's kind of hard to tell the way the org charts are written. And that person has a salary over $200,000 and a proposed 3.5% increase. And again, that's unless there are other salaries that are being allocated to that department that are not evident from the paperwork. The purchasing and contracting department have no changes in their FTEs, and they have a 16% proposed increase in salaries. The development department has no changes in their FTEs, and they have a 19% salary increase. The neighborhood services has a no change in FTEs, and they have a 30% salary increase. Conversely, permits has a slight decrease in their salary budget, although they have no changes to their FTEs. And finally, the customer service department, which is the department that has one of the lowest average FTE salaries per employee, their proposed budget has a salary increase proposed of less than 1%. So I think that someone needs to look at these numbers more and look at how the 3.5% increase is being distributed truly to the employees and across the departments, and really align it better to, you know, where people, to your point earlier, 3% makes a lot more difference to somebody that makes $100,000 than it does. I mean, I worked out this increase for the customer service person, and it comes out, on average, it comes out to less than $30 a month increase.
I've been there, yeah.
But there's, if you're saying everybody's getting 3.5%, why is that department getting less than 1%?
Yeah, I don't, I can't say I'm aware of that part.
Though, I just think that all of the, before this actually goes into effect, and people start getting increases, somebody needs to do a deeper dive on department by department. There's a lot of employee movement between departments. One of the pages that we had in the deck from last time said, like, two people moved from here to here, and one person moved from here to here, but that's not the real picture. There are great swaths of departments that are shut down and reformed, and so it's hard to track the money, you know, because, and there's a, you may have somebody that's a director, but that role shows up in several departments. I can't tell if that's one person or if that's five people. So.
That wouldn't be me either. Thank you very much. Anything you want to put in there? Are you good? Go ahead.
If council will allow me. I can tell you, there were some changes this year in shifting the departments around for a couple of reasons. One of them is we follow the state chart of accounts, and it's all based in government on function. So if an employee is doing a certain function, we have to, per the state chart of accounts, make sure they're in that function. So Kevin went through his, most of his staff, that's where most of the changes were. And we did move people around based on their jobs, what they were doing, and what their function was. So that part of it is, I can assure you, having built the EB budget, everybody in the budget is getting 3.5%.
Next card, please. Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. I got a couple of people here, hold the card. Remember Nelson?
As far as council and city manager go, didn't we do a pay study?
Yes, ma'am.
And wasn't the result of that pay study saying we were getting like $4 an hour? It was pretty bad.
Yeah, I should have probably said that, that anything we did there was a pay study. And I can tell you, before you get too excited about my 30-some-month percent increase, I think I'm up to 12, I think I'm up to 12,000. I'm not exactly sure even, but something, I think I was making eight when I started. I think it's like 12.
I think we're making.
I don't know, but that was a big percent.
It's a huge percent.
Remind me of my teaching days, I'll take it. Go ahead.
Mayor, council members. Yeah, in fiscal year '22, '23, we did a pay study, and we communicated those results to you.
The microphone.
I'm sorry. In fiscal year '22, '23, as a matter of fact, the message in '22, when we did the pay study from a consultant, took into account not only all of the employees in the city, but also the charter members, meaning your assistant city attorney, attorney, city manager, were also evaluated in the same methodology that all positions in the city were. And here's a spreadsheet for your own information. I'd like to see that.
And then one for Member Stokoe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You missed us.
Here.
I'm here.
You got one?
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, the council members were also included, and I apologize, but I do have that information if you need to follow up with the council member's study at the time as well.
I just remember something like, when they added up the hours, it was like, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was like $3.35 an hour.
Yeah. I have that information, I'll be happy to present it to you, and you can distribute that amount.
We also, we did a benefits analysis as well, as part of what benefits do you have? We allowed a survey done throughout Brevard County, Joe, and a pair of cities, and you do have the ability to contribute to the 401K now.
I'm not excited.
Yeah, I know. But like, if you remember.
$12,000 into a 401K.
Other cities had from that pay study, like I think it's West Melbourne, they have health insurance, we don't have health insurance, so there's different factors that go into it. So I think just keeping in mind the amount, again, that pay plan study that we did was very beneficial.
Can I say I was excited to make $4 an hour?
So I shared with you the same methodology, that all of our other employees were classified, charter members were also classified, and that's the information that you have in front of you. We share, our colleagues within the county, and this is the current survey, this is just for the city manager.
Yeah, we can share. Oh, we got a couple here. Don't need to share.
And this spreadsheet shows the different cities within the county, the population, the current salary as city manager, as well as the benefits, so. The document that I passed out established the competitive salary based on the methodology at the time of the study, and then the COLAs were applied subsequently that landed on the current salary that you have now, which I think you'll see that's very competitive with the population, the size of all the cities in Brevard County.
All right, thank you. Flash Mayor.
Yeah, just one question for this round. For staff, does longevity play a role in the salary? For staff, does longevity play a role in the salary?
Longevity. I'm sorry?
What role does longevity play in staff's salary?
So with respect to that document that you see, the consultant applied, in their methodology, the tenure of the employee with respect to their tenure in the city at the time that they were hired, to the time of their tenure, at the time that we did the study. We also took into, and that's why you see a hybrid approach, we also took into account the date of their classification, meaning if they were promoted subsequent to being hired, that timeframe was also computed. So that was the hybrid approach that we took several years ago to arrive at the salaries that are referred to in the budget.
If I could just interject along those lines, that's a good question that you asked, Vice Mayor. Titusville City Manager is the longest-tenured city manager in the county by far, and the highest paid is Melbourne and Palm Bay, two largest cities, and Titusville is third. So in the pecking order, that's exactly where it should be, and that's what the pay studies showed. But as far as Palm Bay and Melbourne, I think that their longevity is only two or three years, and our city manager's been here almost 10 years.
And the Rocklett City Manager is right there with Titusville and much smaller town.
Right, and she's only been there for two years. So, I mean, that's an important factor to consider when you're looking at the salary levels.
Yep. And to add to that, I was going to say also population of cities. So when you say the average of Florida, for instance, I would venture to say Titusville, like, when I go to Florida League of Cities events, I talk to cities all the time, and I'm like, "Oh, you only have 1,000 in your population." So thinking about the population of our city, that we have our own solid waste, that we have our water facilities, all of that, I think you have to, at least for me, when I go to the Florida League of Cities and I see what is happening across the state, I feel very confident in what we're doing and that we are paying people appropriately. And I appreciate that we do have COLAs. I think the mayor and I, you know, both being in education, there were several years we went without pay increases. I mean, I can tell you, and so...
I was happy to get anything.
I think being able to work the budget, to pay our employees, to have as much going to infrastructure, to looking for grants, to getting other funds, I'm very happy with what we're doing. It's not perfect, but I think that we are moving in a very good direction.
Member Nelson.
And I got to say, given that our general fund budget is 60,000, and we probably get another 60 million, and we probably get another 30 million in grants, our employees are doing well. So we appreciate that.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, another question along the same line is that when, are all your salaries in hiring staff, especially regular staff, not the charter staff, everybody hired in at the same rate? Each position hired in at the same rate?
Microphone, Joe.
Joe.
Mike. Okay, I'm sorry. So to answer your question, it takes into account, no, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
We establish a minimum for the pay range, and it depends on the applicant, if we're talking about a new hire, may come in above that minimum salary based on their qualifications, their experience, their tenure, and they may come in above that minimum salary of the range. We also take into account, though, however, you know, our incumbents, the people who are working in that particular position, not to create conflict with the new hire and the incumbent. So all of those factors, to answer your question, are taken into account, there are a number of components that take into account. We just don't hire a new applicant at the minimum, because there are other factors to consider.
And that's important to bring out, is that when you're trying to determine what an individual's salary should be, it is so many factors involved with that, and as some of them was the person's skills, the person's education, the person's experience in similar or like jobs, all of those things, all those factors have to be included in this process. Okay. That'll happen now.
Anything else, Joe? Thank you. All right, Cole, next card.
Chelsea Farrell.
Chelsea Farrell, City of Titusville. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'd like to address a proposed budget correspondence the city has received dated September 23rd, 2024. I'd like you to note that these thoughts are my own, and Richard probably prefers that I not speak on this matter, but I feel that I'm the only one who can articulate my experience in the city attorney's office. I am not sure why our salaries are being called out, but I would like to address a couple aspects of this correspondence. Richard Broome has been with the City of Titusville since 2005, first as the Assistant City Attorney, and then in 2011, he was promoted to become the City Attorney. Richard has never asked for an increase in pay. His pay increases have always been, according to his contract, which was the same contract Dwight Seabers had when he was employed with the City of Titusville. Quoting from Dwight's 1998 contract to become the in-house city attorney, "The city council agrees to annually evaluate the employee's salary and to annually adjust the salary consistent with the department heads of the city, or to such amount as the city and employee may agree." The same sentence is copied in Richard's contract dated October 2011 and in my contract, October 2013. Richard does not believe in being wasteful in spending money when not necessary, and therefore, we are still using the same office furniture that was here when Dwight Seabers was here. His work ethic is beyond reproach. He comes in early, he stays late, he skips lunches, he has never missed a city council meeting since he became the city attorney in 2011. He has always adjusted his schedule to meet with council members to coincide with times that are convenient for you guys, by staying early or coming in late, whatever the case may be, coming in early or staying late. Richard was born and raised in Titusville, and with the volume of institutional knowledge that has been lost due to turnovers and retirements in recent years, Richard has had the responsibility of educating and training incoming department heads on the basics and minutia of running a city department. There is no need to rehash tonight the many details of the pension reform that took place in 2013, but I will just say that there was a significant incentive to get senior employees to retire before the pension multiplier was decreased. Since I started working here, there was an entirely different council, a different city manager, the risk manager has changed twice, purchasing head has changed twice, there's a new community development director, a new building official, a new finance director, and a new fire chief. Many of the department heads have come from out of town and were unfamiliar with the history of the city in general. Richard is never too busy to offer his expertise whenever needed, and his door is always open for questions. I can tell you that former employees still call Richard to pick his brain about random issues, and sometimes it is people who he hardly knew, because everyone knows that Richard can usually come up with a way to handle almost every possible situation that comes upon the city. We are so incredibly blessed to have him at City Hall. I am the Assistant City Attorney. I graduated law school and passed the Florida bar in 2012, and I began working for the City of Titusville in October 2013, just one week after Dwight's last day here as the part-time city attorney at the time. At that time, I had minimal experience both as an attorney and working for a municipality. I moved to Florida to attend law school in Jacksonville, and I had never heard of Titusville before applying to the job I have today. At the time I was hired, the starting salary for my position was a mere $45,000 due to the economy. A few years later, a third-party consultant conducted a citywide pay study, and I received a significant raise over a three-year period, and I believe that my salary is now at a competitive level for my position. Richard had roughly 20 years of private practice experience prior to joining the city. He has been the city attorney for 13 years, and I feel that he is 100% deserving of the salary he receives. I support the city manager's proposed budget with cost-of-living pay increases, just like every other employee who works for the City of Titusville. A cost-of-living raise is important because it is a compensation tool used to keep employees' pay on par with rising prices for basic needs. The government issues COLAs related to social security benefits, but employers may also apply these percentage increases to employees' yearly wages. A COLA is a necessary tool to try and retain all employees that we currently have. Maintaining our current workforce should be a primary concern of city council as you approve the budget each year. I appreciate your time and attention to these matters.
Thank you very much, Chelsea. Appreciated that. Member Cole.
I couldn't let it go by when we questioned the salaries of our city employees. I've said this before, prior to getting on city council about two years ago, I felt like I must have slept through my civics class when I was in high school, because the intricacies of running a city like Titusville, I mean, it's mind-boggling. And the people that work in the City of Titusville are dedicated, and it's abhorrent to me to question the salaries of the people that keep our city running.
Thank you, Member Cole. Next card, please.
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston. He has a handout.
Would you hand that out, please?
Stan Johnston, I certainly appreciate the speakers that spoke before me that did very fine regarding what Dwight Seabers had to share, has also been spoken of by myself, is that it's mathematically true that when you have a standard increase in COLA rate, is that the rich get richer and the poor get poorer.
Sure.
It's just, that's the way it happens. But there are sometimes there are adjustments that are made, like for example, what just Chelsea just shared with you, when she got an increase when it was, her salary was compared with others of her near equal. Same happened with our surveyor, Lynn Sanders, he got a substantial adjustment in his, increase in his pay when he was compared with other city engineers. So what I did today was, I was babysitting some grandchildren, and I gave them three fables. And these fables I did because I believe they're especially appropriate in comparison for some of the activities with the City of Titusville. And those fables are, "Get up and bar the door," "The axe stuck in the wall," and "The emperor has no clothes." The "get up and bar the door" has to do with a man and woman, elderly man and woman in bed, and they, "get up and bar the doors" means get up and shut the door, and it was cold, and the wife wouldn't get up and close the door, neither would the husband, and so they just, they just got very cold the whole night long, which was nonsense. And the "axe stuck in the wall" is a case in which, there was an axe in the wall, and everybody just moaned about it. It's a horrible situation because it's going to fall down and hit somebody in the head and cause damage, and yet so the axe just stayed on the wall, which is nonsense. And the third one is, I've brought to your attention a number of times, that is "The emperor has no clothes," because I end up with nonsense. I'm going to say it's nonsense that I explain. For example, right now is that the city is looking at a survey of us NJ Oaks, and by golly, it violates all these other surveys around it, and surveys done by the city, surveys approved by the city. And I even have the mayor and the vice mayor out there looking at it and showed things, or you could just do a drive-by, you can see, well, there's overhead electric, it's not shown on the survey.
Stan, is this going to have something to do with the budget pretty soon?
Absolutely does.
I haven't heard it yet, you're almost halfway through. Go.
Thank you, okay. Well, this has to do with, in other words, some of the things the city is doing is just, and that's specifically a thing, is that right now is that many people are suffering, and there's everything on that site, according to the survey, is somewhere else located than where the survey says it is. So there's not anything located within the boundary properly. And I can write it and swear to it and everything like that, because it's just not there. I've measured the angle also, and the angle's measured way off. And it disagrees with so many other surveyors, every survey that I know of, except for the original surveyor, who was sick when he did the plan. So I'm saying is that that's nonsense to continue to approve a survey that, for example, Brad Parrish knows is wrong.
Budget.
Pardon?
Budget.
Okay. So in other words, I would like the budget to look into these matters, for example, of absolute nonsense. Now, look here, is that right now, I've got a picture, I've got a picture of me right there, sitting on my car, and in the background is the fountain, is fountain at, what do you call it, Sandpoint Park, fountain was left on.
Stan, have you said anything good, bad, or ugly about the budget yet?
That has to do with our budget. In other words, there's so much nonsense going on that you would think with all this money being spent, is that there would be some sense applied to it, and there not, there's not. I mean, so I complained to the council meeting about, for example, I complained about the survey that I just told you about, okay, that you and vice mayor went out there, and it's causing a lot of problems already, and yet the city is not moving forward to solve the problem. And the same is with sewage spills.
Coming to the end and nothing on the budget.
I think it has everything to do with the budget.
Nothing on the budget.
Is that, you can look as far as doing education on what is honest and truthful and fair, my goodness.
You're normally better than that.
You can spend, well, I believe it is. So thank you for at least trying to listen to me.
Well, we listened, I kept waiting for the budget word in there.
No, that is budget.
All right, you're good.
In the beginning, you didn't, okay.
Stan's back. Next card.
That's it, sorry.
All right. You know, you can think, well, let me see, first of all, is there anything the council would like to add? I certainly think we've had some good discussion.
Well, there is one thing I'd like to add. I had planned on...
Card, who has a card?
Who has a card?
I'm sorry, what's the name? Yes, ma'am, you indicated ordinance is 30 and 31, they're coming up.
We had talked about doing a public, hiring a public information officer, and I think Mr. Larisse found a way to hire one without including it in this, adding to our budget bracket.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So apparently, we will get one October 1st, or the position will be available October 1st.
We'll go through that hiring process.
Okay. You can't, like, snap your fingers.
All right, then. This is where we do that move the...
Thank you for mentioning that, so it's clear.
Member Stokoe.
I was just going to say, thank you for mentioning that, since that was discussed at our last hearing.
That's right, good point.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Really wanted to see a sort of, tell our successes, you know, because we've had quite a few, and I'm not sure it's getting out there as well as it should.
So just, so council understands what we've done, we've taken a funded FTE that's already funded, and we're going to defer that to mid-year with the other deferred FTEs, and we'll evaluate that at mid-year.
Okay.
Very good. All right, go ahead and do your thing. Members... Member Nelson.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance number 28, 2024, the city of Titusville, levying an uppering millage rate of 6.5817, which is 3.59% increase above the rollback rate of 6.3536, and to levy a voted debt service millage of .1936.
I'm glad you're an attorney. All right, we have a motion from Member Nelson. We have a second from Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
That part passes unanimously. Please.
Well, married also, I'd like to point out this time that the percentage increase above rollback rate is a percentage increase in property taxes that is now adopted by council.
Is that stated correctly, or she needs to?
I was just announcing.
Okay. All right, Member Nelson, take your time.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance number 29, 2024, adopting the general fund and related budgets of the city of Titusville.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City manager, you want to lead us into the next thing?
Now, this will be the adoption of ordinance number 30, 2024, admitting and increasing the schedule of rates, charges for water and sewer.
Counsel, Vice Mayor.
We'll have to open the public hearing on this ordinance.
Tell me again?
We'll open the public hearing and take cards on this ordinance.
Right. It was, remember, Vice Mayor had his light, but I think that's from his vote. Okay, call the cards, please, on ordinance number 30, 2024.
Yes, sir. We have three cards. The first is Dwight Severs.
These are three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs. Certainly, I understand, have seen over the years various increases in water and sewer rates, but frankly, nothing like what is projected over the next few years, and future councils having to struggle with seven, perhaps eight percent increase. It's unfortunate that some of these issues weren't addressed a number of years ago, which the, remember Nelson certainly agrees, it should have been addressed. And it's hard, as I heard the last meeting, for some people to, particularly those who rent, to struggle passing on the additional costs that may be incurred. I'm a member of the finance committee and leadership team of my church. We've been discussing budget for next year, and of course, I have to pass on that utility, stormwater, solid waste, et cetera, would go up. I do not hear anything Councilmember Stokel recommended that the staff consider looking at the tier rates and perhaps the lowest tier, not increasing that, charging more for upper tiers. I would respectfully, having had six children, three daughters, teenage daughters, and the water bill going up, I don't think that's good for families, and particularly low-income families. You already have a conservation rate, and I wouldn't recommend doing that, and I don't see that in the current proposal as such.
Especially those with three daughters, right?
Yes. In addition, I have a question with regard to water and sewer impact fees. I noticed they were last adjusted in 2019 as a part of this budget. Is there any suggestion of looking at those since costs have dramatically increased since 2019? And in order to carry out the year code, section 34-440, it's the intent of this section to provide for the assessment and collection of impact fees on all new development occurring with this city so as to ensure that such new development pays its fair and proportionate share of the cost for water and sewer improvements to accommodate new development. And my, I guess my last question is, how much money do we have in reserve from tap-on fee or whatever in the bank that we've been setting aside for this purpose?
All right. Thank you. Do you want to comment on the set aside money? Or, and I'll get to you in just a second, Kevin.
I don't have an exact reserve number. I didn't know that question was going to come up tonight. I can certainly get it for you. We're getting ready to prepare for year-end, so anything I give you is just going to be an estimate at this time until we finalize our books. But I can tell you what we have right now. I can run it tomorrow and give you what I have right now.
Okay. Do you have an idea?
I don't. I haven't looked at it in about two weeks.
Looks like Kevin.
Yeah, we got it. Go ahead, Kevin.
Not for impact fees, but the total cash equivalents is around 28 million.
Okay. At least we have money in the bank to, for expansion.
Thank you. Next card.
Vicki Conklin.
Good evening, Vicki Conklin, 2920 Royal Oak Drive in Titusville. I have no objection to the 3.5 COLA increases, but I do object to the increased taxation. I'm fiscally conservative with taxpayer money, and I think 5% water, 5% sewer, 7.5% for trash, 18.5% stormwater, I think that's way too much of a hit on our residents. Everybody's struggling, going door to door. We're talking to lots of people, and you are as well. This is too much. People are struggling to make ends meet. Nobody in our community, many don't get the 3.5%, many don't get any percent of increases in their wages and what they're earning in their limited income. And so I just think that we are creating an oppressive financial burden on all of our residents and all of our businesses by having these increases. I really urge you to reexamine those.
Thank you. I always have to say, and I'm not going to be here a whole lot longer to say it, but I would say that every meeting, there's always a talk about, you know, it's just going to raise taxes, can we lower taxes? Everybody wants to lower taxes, but everybody wants to improve services. Everybody wants to, we have a $40 million infrastructure project coming because we are so far behind on keeping up with that. Everybody, you know, our solid waste people were out today in the storm. When we have a hurricane and they work extra, they're there. These things cost money. And now, that being said, I'd love to have no tax increase ever. Now, let's add all that, that it's been kind of quite an inflation era. And, you know, gas is like playing the stock market these days. Is it 3.49 today, or does it go down to 3.19? And so, that being said, I totally agree. Let's lower taxes, let's get rid of taxes and all that stuff. But we have to have services too, and that's the problem. Member Nelson?
And the other problem is, we want a clean lagoon. And I think we're finally at the point where we're starting to see that progress. And it's been eight years, and these guys have been working like crazy on it. But we're seeing progress, we're seeing seagrass reappear. And so do we say, gee, this year we want to forego the projects for the lagoon, and, which is what we did for years, Mr. Severs would tell you, we did that for years and didn't have any projects. And now, when I came on council, I felt like we were playing catch-up and trying to get the infrastructure straight. So I think there's got to be a middle of the road. You won't want to go crazy, but you have to realize that you have to do the projects to keep up.
And certainly, this is my place to say, and if you don't know it, especially in the position you're looking at, our city leads the county with completed projects for the Indian River Lagoon 16. The one in front of us is Brevard Zoo. If it wasn't Brevard Zoo, we'd leave the whole conference. And that takes money, and Indian River Lagoon Association has awarded us, and they're proud of us. And everything costs a little bit of money. So, Member Cole?
Well, you know, no one wants to raise rates on water and sewer. Nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to raise their taxes. But when Kevin goes out to buy chemicals for the water treatment plant and goes out to buy things for the sewage treatment plant, and the prices have increased, who's going to pay for it? We've got to pay for it. So we have to generate money to pay for these things. We look at the budgets, and when the increases come in, I mean, unless the members of city council are going to pay for it, I guess it won't be paid for. So those increases are necessary to keep the city running like we want it to run. Like they say, you don't miss your water till your well runs dry. You don't play the increases, and your well's going to run dry.
Yeah, and I would just reiterate, and it's well taken. Let me make it clear, this is, your words are well taken, but nobody wants to raise taxes. Nobody sitting up in a place like this wants to raise taxes. Nobody running for an office wants to raise taxes. Nobody wants to raise taxes. But at the same time, when a fire engine goes from, and if I get these numbers wrong, correct me, but it's like 600,000, 800,000 to 1.2 million, can you toss that number at me? Is that right? 800,000 to 1.2 million, we got to have the fire trucks. And, you know, again, I just, you know, wish that there was, we could just flat tax that out of the way, no problem. But, agreed, don't want to raise taxes. Member Nelson?
And can I say this? This is what I understand. I haven't verified it, but we're the only city that has seagrass growing. So we've done something right. So it's been a long road, and it's been a hard road, and we spent a lot of money getting there. And the guys have done a lot of work, but we're headed there.
I would have, we've had a lot of citizen support, you know, and not to get all into it, but when I first got here in 16, we started working with the tree team. And we got a tree ordinance that nobody else has, and we have a low-impact development ordinance that nobody else has. But those folks have been very helpful with that as well, and I want to make sure I tip a hat to that group. Member Stokel?
Yep. I did also just want to add on that, with that, we also have our lowest millage rate now that, once this one just passed in 16 years, which is important to note, because as we're saying, yes, there's a 3.59% tax increase, that, not everybody is feeling that. So some people might actually have a tax decrease. It depends on if you own your property, if it's homesteaded, if you're under saver homes versus if you have rentals. So when we say that, that's like overall, but some people are actually receiving a tax decrease. Some people are, I can tell you, some people are getting very, very minimal tax increase on that. And this is also important, why we are trying to increase revenues and through development and increasing our tax base as a whole, as we diversify. All of that feeds into that, so we can continue to lower that millage rate and hopefully, eventually, make sure that we may be able to go to rollback rate. And you have our citizens paying less, and maybe the businesses and the industries paying more. So it's not an overnight fix. Some of us have been on here for eight years, but to come in back in 2016 and say, that was one of my goals, was to lower our millage rate, and you do that by increasing your revenue and diversifying and getting it elsewhere. And so, yes, while this is not ideally what, you know, we would want, nobody wants a tax increase, I feel like we've come a long way, and I think staff has worked really hard on a lot of these initiatives to help us get here.
Thank you. Thank you. Next card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 868 Point Settlem, a former engineer here, who, I had very good performance evaluations when I worked for the city. I had license of PE and PLS, and I was considered okay, but now, when I'm here before this podium, I'm just disrespecting and offended, just like what happened just at the last time I just spoke, who said, and I spoke a number of times about what other people spoke about. And in this budget aspect, but let's talk about sewer. Sewer has been a sore spot with me. However, thank you for the change that now we have it headed by Mr. Cook instead of Mr. Stauffer, because I had, I had spent many hours and hours and hours of time of trying to get the fountain started off. And now, whenever I speak about it, it's as if it never happened, but it did happen. And we've got photos of it, all kinds of witnesses and so forth, of the sewage spill that was denied by city that still happened. It's a terrible thing that happened. But I'm thankful that Kevin Cook is there now, and I don't think we're going to have the problems like we had. But there's a lot of good service that we have had in the past, and I'm looking forward to continued performance of Mr. Cook in handling this department, which has been, I mean, I couldn't even get phone calls returned when the sewage spills. Make phone calls, nobody return. Ring the phone, nobody answer, leave messages, nothing happened. So this is insulting, and it's disgraceful, and it's an insult to my, an offense to my profession. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. We're on hold, I think. And you know the next words. Next card, please.
Thank you. Michelle Albin.
My name is Michelle Albin, 3593 Parling. And I don't want to be your PIO, but the inflation rate is 3.2, so 3.5 COLA is not that bad. I don't think that would be that bad. And everything, every time I've spoken to your city staff, they've been more than helpful and really great, so.
Well, thank you for saying that.
I guess my whole thing is, I feel like that there's an elephant in the room. There's, I agree with everything that you said about raising taxes because we have to fix the infrastructure, we have to fix things, but there's two major ways of lowering it would be, one is the impact fees.
I agree.
Lowering those, I don't see why we need to do that. And then, two, and I know this is a little tough, but suing our own citizens for $165,000. You know, to sit down and we talk about transparency, and we talk about working together, there's got to be a way that we can all sit in a room and fix this, and that these lawsuits don't have to continue. Tony doesn't have to continue working and trying to raise money on something that was run. So those are my comments.
Member Nelson, before you say that, thank you. I'm just saying thank you. She's going to talk to you or say something, I don't know what she's going to do, but I did want to say thank you for your words.
This is the attorney view of it. So you have a state statute and says, these are your rights, and you cannot create more rights. And that ordinance or charter amendment was trying, in my view, was trying to create more rights. And so what you're trying to do is get a judge to say, okay, this is how we can read them together, which is basically, this is what this means, and this is what this means, and stop that conflict between the two.
But we're not doing that in a, wait, we're doing that in a lawsuit, both of them.
You have to do it in a lawsuit.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a law degree, so I wouldn't be able to sit here and argue. But it just doesn't seem correct. You know, when we're talking about so many things that we need, to be spending money on lawyers.
Somebody suggested to me, I won't say who, that we give the judge a note and tell the judge to make a decision. And unfortunately, you can't do that. So it's sort of a crazy way of doing it. I get that.
Yeah. I just can think of so many other ways that we can spend that money.
Oh, yeah.
I like the idea. I mean, wouldn't it be nice if we just all get along?
Correct. Yeah. Put us in a room.
Next card. Oh, yeah, next card.
That's it, sorry.
All right. Counsel, anything on this particular one? Member Nelson?
I do have a question for Kevin. Would a tier rate, how would that work? Would that be something that would be, in your view, appropriate?
We utilize a tiered rate already for water conservation purposes. The more water you use, the more money you pay.
We do.
Okay.
So residential is tiered currently in four... So residential is tiered currently in four tiers. First tier starts at 5,000 gallons.
Okay. Okay.
And, and we do, and, and I think that, um, member Stokoe could probably clarify this for me. She had a little maybe addendum or addition to that, but that may be something they wanna talk about with the next council or whatever. But I know we do that on a tiered system, but member Stokoe.
Yeah, that was my question at the last, uh, our first hearing was if, one, if we could, I think we have it, it starts at 5,000 and then goes above that. And just from looking, I feel like a family of four probably uses more than 5,000, but you, I think you said our average is not that. Um, so I would be curious on that. And then, yeah, I think to say if maybe we didn't raise the rates for those that are at that first tier and then made those that are at the higher tier that are using more, those rates increased more so. So those that were at that lower, um, had more incentive and then weren't hitting, getting that additional cost, if that was possible. Or is that something that we can do for the next year, look into?
Yeah. So the rate consultant, Trevor, our average user right now for residential, about 4,500 gallons a month. So they all, so the bulk of our citizens do fall within the first tier on, on a residential standpoint. The concern with not raising the lowest tier and raising the higher to recover the revenue that's needed to operate the funds, those hi, those higher tiers are gonna probably have to change substantially, or our fixed costs has to go up. Cause the rates are being set blending all these, the customer usage together. So by holding one tier down, the others have to make up for it. Um, and then by creating higher conservation goals, that also means the fund is probably gonna need to raise fixed costs to make sure we do fund the fund as needed to maintain cash reserves, to keep the capital programs going. I think that was the concern when we, when we try to hold one tier customer down, it does affect the rest of them, whether it be the commercials, whether it be the fixed meters, the, the, the revenue needed to operate the fund is still gonna be there, it's just gonna be recovered elsewhere. And the higher tier structure may not result in the need as much as maybe changing the fixed costs would. Certainly if that's the desire of the council moving forward, we can talk to the next rate study about looking closer at how the tiers are adjusted, uh, from a standpoint of if there's desire to space them differently. I would say looking at other communities, the starting tiers are 3,000 gallons in some communities that push a higher conservation rate.
Oh, gosh.
There are places like Melbourne that don't use a conservation rate. They're fixed-rated at all tiers. So, there's a plenty of way of doing it. There's really no, no set piece for everyone, but we can certainly look at anything the council would like to look at for the next go around.
I'm thinking maybe just next year, we have a couple options just so we can make a better informed decision with that. Um, and then in regards to the impact fees, I want to say not long ago, we did, uh, look at our impact fees.
We did.
Yeah. We have an impact fee project going on right now for all the impact fees except for transportation, which is the Borah County impact fee structure. But all other impact fees are currently being reviewed by a consultant, both a engineering firm and a financial consultant is actually is our, our same consultant does our rate study for the water. So we'll be coming back in the near future with adjustments to all of our impact fees, including fire, police, parks, city hall, uh, on top of the connection fees for water and sewer.
Okay. And I think that's something that we can look at. And again, those of us that have been on council for a while, we know back when we were waiving them because we were begging for development here during those tough times. And now that we're, um, we have a lot of projects going on, that's something-
Time for impact.
-as mentioned, where we can get additional revenue. So-
I agree.
Thank you for that information.
All right. Uh, did you do the motion yet?
I didn't.
Okay.
I've moved to approve ordinance number 30-2024, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates.
Second.
I have a motion from member Nelson, a second from member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City manager, bring us the next-
Onto ordinance number 31-2024, which is the code of ordinances, uh, for solid waste service charge and rates.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, anything you wanna say? Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Uh, see none? Call the card, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Two cards. Uh, Ms. Conklin, uh, you did indicate this one in your, did you wanna speak on this? Okay, thank you. And then Stan Johnston. Stan.
She's not going, she passed.
I'm not sure. Sometimes I come here and I'm thinking, I'm not allowed to speak because I'm, I'm who I am.
You're always allowed to speak. Just speak on topic, baby.
Okay.
You're the man.
Well, I believe I was on the topic, but I was-
We'll agree to disagree. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're free to disagree, but don't take my time. Okay, please? All right. So if you wanna disagree about this, you can.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, uh, let's keep on topic, okay? Cause we're talking about solid waste.
Yep, we are.
What have I told you about solid waste before? Do you remember?
You-
Have you been paying attention?
You think he's doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Same thing's happening.
That's what I was gonna say tonight.
Okay. And we have, what is, how, how does our-
I listen.
Listen, are you listening to me?
I am.
How does our system compare with other, other, uh, cities and so forth?
Excellent.
No. It's more, it's more than excellent. Okay?
Oh.
Good. So you missed there.
Stan missed with me today.
And we do have a, a very good mayor. He's done excellent things, but that has nothing to do with solid waste. I'm sorry I said that. I, I spoke out of turn. Okay? So I'll stop there. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Keep, keep him here, okay? Make sure, don't work him too hard. Thank you.
I'll, I'll be out there with you looking at him. I don't know about that. All right. Um, there was another one? Yes?
Is that it? Yes, sir, that was it.
Okay. Um, member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 31-2024, amending sections 16-116 and 16-117 of the Code of Ordinances by increasing this holiday waste service charges and rates.
Second. It also includes 16-118, I'm sorry.
Oh, and 16-118.
Right, that was not there. It includes 118.
I have a motion for member Nelson.
And a second.
And a second from member Cole. Uh, roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Passed unanimously. City manager?
Onto, uh, ordinance number 32-2024, adopting the Enterprise Fund Capital Improvements Program budgets for the city of Titusville for FY25.
Anything from council? Call the cards, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Two cards. The first is Ms. Toni Shifalo.
Hey, Ms. Shifalo.
Good evening, Shifalo, Tropic Street. I don't really know very much about the Enterprise Fund, and I think I know what capital improvements programs are. So I wanted to speak on this last thing so I could speak about all the others above it in just a few seconds. And that's because the young man that normally stands up here and says, well, 5%, it's just a little bit to you, but it's, it's a lot. Well, 7%, that's just a little bit to you, but it's a lot. So he's not here, so I feel compelled to take his place because I've been doing something, running, running some of the numbers and stuff. And there've been a lot of numbers, so I'm probably inaccurate. But with the 3% over the rollback, which was already at 6%, that's about nine or 10% on the property taxes. Ooh, that's gonna be a couple hundred dollars, um, at least. And the water and sewer, that was, I heard 18.5% and 7.5, and I figured that up at 26. And then I heard there was 5% and 5%. That's 10. And there's still 18.5 on the storm water, so that's still over 25% increase. And then I heard the figure, well, that's only about for the average customer, $4.58 a month for water and $5.90 for, for sewage, and that's only 10.48 a month. And I figured that up, golly, for the average customer, that's only $125.76 a year. So there's all those. And then I figured COLA on social security, and at my rate, that would be around 600. And then somebody got up and said COLA wasn't 3.5%, it was 3.2. So I had to re-figure, and it came down. It's, I'm only gonna get a little more than $500 increase, and yet I'm gonna have several hundreds of dollars increase because it's only a little bit on the millage, and it's only a little bit on the water and sewage, and it's only a little bit on the storm water, and heaven knows how much it's gonna be on the capital improvement projects. And so, in honor of the young man who's not here, I hope he's watching, I'm saying this, it's only a little bit, but it sure adds up quickly for the average poor folk. And there's a lot of us out here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure he appreciates you're representing him. Um, next card.
Stan Johnston.
I'm the same person that's been speaking here just a few minutes ago.
Same guy.
Stan Johnston. And, uh, I believe we need to spend more money in capital improvements and prepare more for it. I think we're behind schedule. I'm saying that by reading what? The Stormwater Master Plan. City is way behind on the Stormwater Master Plan, big time. And what does it say in the Stormwater Master Plan? What does it recommend? Does anybody know? I bet nobody knows here, but maybe, maybe a Mr. Cook knows. But it says what we, it recommends is that we get federal funding to, uh, to, to work out this Stormwater Master Plan. I'm not saying we should do what it says to be done in 1966, but we should do something, something that, 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 uh, needs some capital improvements. And it recommends that what we do is get federal assistance. And at that time, it said, uh, how, uh, where, where to go to get it. So I don't know where, uh, where we should go now, but, uh, uh, with sea level rise, with storms getting bigger, uh, we're in, we're in much better shape than Coral Cables, Car-
Coral Gables?
That's it.
Got one, got one right.
Thank you. Thank you for helping me this time. And Fort Myers and, and, uh, other places. We're not gonna have the surges like they, they had that's gonna affect us. But we, we do have sea level rise.
Yep.
Miami's in big trouble. We're gonna lose it, I think. Uh, maybe they'll be like Ne- I don't think they can be like Netherlands because the water comes up from underneath.
Yep.
So, uh, I'm, I'm for it, and I think that, uh, uh, we're probably gonna have to increase it and get federal funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Any other cards? Thank you very much. Uh, any, Vice Mayor, you can either say something? No, you're good? All right, member Nelson.
I'm just gonna say, Stan, when we looked at the capital improvements, there was a recommendation at this level, a recommendation at this level. We sort of met when in the middle. Uh, we didn't wanna tax people any more than, we were trying to keep it down. We were trying to keep it down.
All right, go ahead.
Um, I move to approve ordinance number 32-2024, amending the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvement Program budgets of the city of Titusville.
Second.
I have a motion by member Nelson, a second by member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City manager?
Uh, you're on petitions and requests.
Anything you speak about, of course, should be related to the budget. I think we've covered just about everything. And I appreciate you guys for being here. And for those that have left, come on, Tony, if you wanna come up. Yeah. So, well, you're here. I'm sure there's more. That's why we have petitions and requests. Get up here.
Thank you. Shifalo, Tropic Street, I want to speak about the process. Instead of the annual in-person workshop this year, it was decided to do an invitational-only survey. 3,000 forms sent randomly, only 549 responded. The voice of 53 citizens who sought out the survey online were not included for some reason, probably fear of their voices being heard because they cared enough to participate. The results are astonishingly negative in all aspects surveyed. Yeah. While the consultant showed you some positive strengths, the survey results itself showed much negative feeling about every aspect of life in Titusville. The results actually showed deep disappointment in the quality of each facet of livability. The only facet rated above 50% for excellent or good was availability of parks and recreation to the residents. Every other facet from protection of the national, natural environment to education, arts and culture, inclusivity and engagement of the citizens, that means, not inclusivity of minorities or anything like that, but inclusivity in the process and engagement was rated pretty low. Anyway, even though I almost flunked statistics in an otherwise stellar grad school career, I learned enough to read the results of this survey, which should have been alarming to you, counsel. Because you think you're doing such a spectacular job and the people don't, and staff should see this as an indication that the gig is up on pulling the wool over the eyes of the citizenry. The responses seem kinda skewed too. Only approximately 1% of the total population responded, and three-fourths of them were over 55. Over one-half were women, four-fifths were white, and only one-fifth were renters. So a small bunch of old, white homeowner women, probably cat owners too, determined the citizen input on the budget for this year. And while just over half rated Titusville as a good or better place to live, 66% think the overall direction the city is taking is not good. And I have a whole bunch of statistics which I carefully worked out and I'm going to skip over so I can get to the meat of the heart. We need to not be increasing funding in areas that got rated high, like, um, I will go back a little bit, like, um, they loved law enforcement, fire and emergency services. They got really good ratings, over 50%. Um, even the library got 75% favorability. What we need, more than two-thirds want better quality utility infrastructure. May I have 16 more seconds?
You may.
They want better designed residential development and more attention paid to street repairs. Only 23% of citizens feel informed on issues, and 76% feel a lack of transparency. Most alarming, only 28% feel you're acting in the best interest of the community, with only 26% having confidence in Titusville government. So instead of hiring a public information officer, why don't we look at the things that we already have in the budget and educate the people with workshops, reach out for more involvement, and maybe next year, have in-person workshops again instead of that survey.
Or, or a hybrid, a little bit of both, maybe.
I think that would work. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Hey. And Toni? Toni? Don't pick on cat ladies.
Don't take on cat ladies.
Don't pick on cat ladies. I, I wouldn't, but the statistics, ma'am, only 1% and, and really, through, over half were women and, and four-fifths-
Toni, good job. I would be the first to tell you, I think that was a flawed survey. I think that, uh, the numbers were not good. And I would also say that, um, you know, and I can start saying a little more of those kind of things. I head on out, but, uh, I've been blessed to coach with my son at Cocoa High School and went back-to-back state championships. I will tell you, the phone calls we get are from the people who aren't happy. The point I'm making is, we don't have a whole bunch of people come to meetings and say, let's hurry up and go up there, cause we wanna tell them what a great job they're doing. And I can tell you, is, is being up here is a lot like being a coach. I don't care how many state championships you win, they're happy. They think you know they're happy. But the people who aren't happy are the ones who call you. So that being said, all I can say is this group here, that group there, and, and thank you guys, you gotta do your very best. And you gotta look yourself in the mirror at the end of the day and say, I hope I did my best. And that's all you can do. Coach, teacher, firefighter, police chief, whatever it may be, you gotta do your best. And, uh, Stan, you do your best. So that, I just thought I'd toss that out there for the heck of it. But anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, yes, sir. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, this team here who, uh, began budget process back in January. Um, it's a very, very professional team.
Very difficult task.
Works together very well together. So, uh, I applaud them for putting a very good budget together for 2025.
And I would say also to your, their thing there, Toni, um, the concerns that you expressed, those are things that you have to have tax dollars to improve. Those are things that we, we, nobody wants to raise taxes. Nobody wants to do that. But you also, we want better roads. We want better, so I'm with you. It's gotta be a compromise. It's gotta be in the middle. Thank this whole group, all of you, every day, all the way. And again, thank the Budget Committee, and thank you guys for being here. Hold on to your hats as you go out. It's probably pretty windy out there. Are we good?
One more, one more thing.
What do we got left?
I got me.
Oh. That's right. Says Vice Mayor. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, I wanna say thank you and, 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 do we have cake and soda tonight?
Only if you're gonna ra, you're gonna have to raise tax dollars for that one. If I'm going, you're gonna raise tax money for that.
If, if Joe's the employee of the month.
All right. With that, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
I don't know if we finished the petitions part. Yeah, I think Stan, I don't know. I don't think we finished it.
And?
Cause Toni spoke. I didn't know if we had anybody else before we adjourn.
Stan, you better wave to me. Stan, you better wave to me.
Stan, are you passing?
All right, thank you. Dismissed.